Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. Please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Join me as we pray. Our dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening, thank you for this time to come together and do the business of the city. We ask that you would give us wisdom in the decisions that we make in fairness and looking at all the points that we need to. Would I also ask that you would, we thank you for the rain, but we ask for a little break from the rain. We do appreciate it. And we ask that you would watch over and give people on the road safe in the weather tonight. Be with us now, and we'll give you the praise of the Lord for what you do, and it's in your negative prayer.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Let the leaders to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please open the roll, please.
Mary Bob, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Steph, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Zach Ren, Ward 6.
Present.
Thank you, Meredith. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from February the 6th. Council, you've had an opportunity to review these minutes and look them over, now would be the time to make any edits. If there are none, then a motion will be in order.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell, get us started this evening, please, sir.
Yes, Mayor, the first one is a resolution that extends the historic district moratorium from, until July 6th, 2020. Basically, as y'all got some changes, but have not completed all of the changes for the process, and also you want to wait to see what happens with some pending state legislation, which could affect that.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If there's no discussion, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manino, food truck ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This particular ordinance, right now, for mobile retail food establishments, the city's utilizing its peddler's ordinance, it isn't quite, it wasn't designed for that. With that, what is being presented to you is an ordinance that provides for definitions, standards, operations of mobile food, mobile retail food establishments or food trucks. With that, as I had mentioned in the work session, there may be room for some additions if there are still some concerns, but with this particular ordinance, it'll provide, again, for standards and permitting procedures for food trucks.
Okay. Council, any questions on this first reading of the ordinance? We had a little discussion during the work session about length of time and whatnot. Any clarification needed from that?
Not yet.
Okay. And seeing that we're done with that. Thank you. Randy, we'll take this up for final consideration at our first meeting in March, which I believe is March 5th. The next item, HBC design standard, no, sorry, I'm jumping ahead here. No, I'm not. Design standard revisions. Mr. Hart agree, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. These revisions are about two years in the making. From 2018, there was a case before you on appeal that you asked us to go back and look at the design standards and try to avoid that situation going forward, and that appeal involved painting a brick. So as staff in the HBC continue to look at the design guidelines, we noticed that there were a lot of conflicts with some language. We have four historic districts, or residential historic districts in the city. Not all the language for the ordinances in all those districts are the same. The HBC thought it'd be a good idea to try to make that more uniform. So we've done that in this. We've also tried to clarify the language with, like, the painted brick, trying to make that more uniform between the downtown district and the residential districts. So most of these changes in the, before you, in this text revision are grammatical in nature, they're administrative in nature. We've added definitions to this to clarify some things. We cleaned up the language, the misspellings, things like that that were occurring through here. We've changed some of the language to take more of the gray out, to make things a little more black and white, for example, by substituting the word "shall" for where we have "shoulds" previously, just trying to clean that up. The two things that I did not mention to you in the work session was that, as part of your record, the State Shipwreck Office did review our changes earlier this fall. We incorporated a few of their administrative changes. They also had content changes, which we're not addressing at this point. That might be a future phase coming up. And then with incorporation of their recommendations, HBC did approve these changes at their December 17th meeting, and that's all in your packet there. I just didn't clarify that previously. But most of these are administrative and grammatical related changes.
And Mayor, staff looks at these as sort of the first step of the ordinances that'll be coming out as related to the moratorium. Now that these guidelines are sworn in place, they can actually go into some of the content with respect to those, as y'all will discuss that in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Hart agree. Thank you, David. Mr. Lovell, you have the final of these first readings of ordinances tonight.
Mayor, this ordinance is an alarm registration ordinance, just to require individuals who have alarms for their personal property or commercial property to register those with the police department. So we have a contact person if we notice that alarm happens to be operating improperly or has too many false alarms, or when we respond, so we can actually contact somebody with respect to that. The 911 unfortunately doesn't have that information. Theirs is normally based upon actually the property owner according to the tax records, and that may not necessarily always be the individual who has the alarms. So that's the purpose behind this ordinance.
Okay.
It is recommended by staff.
Any questions or discussion?
Is this mainly just for commercial property?
I mean, the chief could probably address which ones they have more, but it's my understanding it's equally for residential and commercial.
Is this just some software that will add to the police webpage?
Basically, they'll probably just add a little PDF blank form that, you know, it'll be alarm registration on there, you'll click it, and type in your name, your address, and that you have an alarm, and your alarm company, and close it, and that's it.
We've already got the software in our management systems, so we're going to be able to populate items.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you. Mr. Lovell, next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is an addendum to our contract with Professional Probation Services Inc. For your recollection, that is the company that provides probation services for the city of Cartersville Municipal Court. They do so at no charge to the city, all costs are passed on for the defendant, to the defendants. They've been operating at a cost of about $35 for probably the last 15 or 20 years, and they're asking to go up to $40 a month per probationers. It's my understanding that this rate is less than other private probation companies charging the area, and it is also less than the state charges. The judge of municipal court does recommend this for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions on that?
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Cost of service study, Mr. Dooley. How are you tonight?
Hi, Harry, how do you?
Good.
I've got some more to be. Mayor and Council, the electric department is requesting authorization for the mayor and city clerk to approve a service contract with McLean Engineering. The scope of workers' contract will be to complete a cost of service study. This will be done to help us determine where our rates and riders need to be set going forward to be fair and competitive as well. The cost to complete the study should not exceed $15,000. It's a budgeted item, and we're asking for approval, and Keith has already approved or looked at the contract as well.
I have.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mr. Gillum, you have the next couple, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Coming to you with a program and contract with Cartersville Little League to continue to offer baseball to the youth of our community for ages 7 to 14. Cartersville Little League's been offering baseball to the community since the 1960s, and we want to continue to have this partnership move forward, just like they've always been doing, with the same terms of agreement. Little League will reinvest the profits from their program back into the facility and the fields at Hicks Park, and Little League will pay the utilities on the concession stand and the restroom, while the Parks and Recreation Department will pay the utilities for the field lighting and the irrigation. The Parks and Rec Departments had a great relationship with Cartersville Little League in the past, and we'd like to continue that on an even greater scale moving forward. So we're looking forward to having them as a program provider, and so I recommend to Mayor and Council for the approval of the contract with Cartersville Little League.
Thank you. Questions for Tom on this item?
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, please.
The next one is another program and contract with Southern Soccer Academy. They've been offering soccer to youth and adults of our community. SSA's been doing soccer here in Cartersville since 2017, when they took over for Clash that was offering soccer previously. So we want to continue along with the same terms of the agreement that they've had in the past, where they reinvest the profits of their program back into the facility and the fields at the soccer complex. SSA will pay the city the $20 non-resident fee per player per season, and recommend Mayor and Council to approve this contract with Southern Soccer Academy.
Okay. Questions on this item? If not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Porta.
Yes, Mayor, this is a One Beacon settlement we had for our property damage back in the sinkhole that we had in 2015. Previously, we received $771,000 or $781,000 from One Beacon, and they had $82,000 on reserve for the remaining damages. Showing them an additional cost, was able to get another $134,000 from them. Recommend approval of a settlement of $1,7198 for One Beacon for the remaining funds for the gas department building, the fuel station, the fiber node building, fuel canopy, and the demolition of the old fuel station.
Okay. Questions for Dan on this?
Question I didn't ask. This money goes into the general fund or back to the appropriate, like, proportion goes to gas or what? Dan?
Technically, it goes back to each of those buildings, because the $500,000 for the gas administration building, which we borrowed funds for, would go back to them. The fiber building, we built the new node building, this will reimburse the fiber. So technically, it goes back to each of those funds, and the fuel station, which is the garage.
So against all the appropriate?
Yes.
Not just to the general fund?
Yeah, got it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Jones, while you're making your way up, you'll have an item to add. Chair will entertain a motion to add that item.
Motion to approve.
Somewhere, never got a motion in a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Everybody's heard.
A lot of motions tonight. Mr. Jones, go ahead.
First up is our sales tax refund consultant. We'd like permission to engage with Tax Specialists of Georgia Southeast LLC. They are a company that specializes in sales tax reimbursement applications from the Georgia Department of Revenue. They specifically have a competency in getting these sales tax refunds on water projects. It's fairly common knowledge in the water business that these sales tax refunds are available for wastewater projects, but they have some success on the water side, and we'd like to use them for a couple of water projects we've done in the past three years. They work entirely on commission. They charge a 25% commission on whatever they recover from the Department of Revenue, and that commission is entirely based on the size of the project that they're authorized to work on. This commission is based on projects that are $2 million or less. So if we were to go over $2 million or have a project that's over $2 million, that commission becomes negotiable, but it's not at the level that we're at now. So I do recommend that for your approval. This is, this would largely be found money for us, in essence.
Okay. Questions for?
How many years can you go back?
Three, I believe, is what the limit is.
And that would be just about the time our bonding project started and everything?
That's exactly right. So we get this online, and I think we can get all of those major projects in under that three-year cutoff.
We've spent way more than $2 million, right? Or is it per project?
It's per, it is aggregate with them, but these particular projects were each about a $2 million project. So we didn't quite crest that $2 million.
Got it.
Now, if we have a good outcome with this, we've got others that we'll have them take a look at, but we're going to dip our toe in the pool with these projects and see how that goes.
Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Bob.
Yes, sir. This is, this one will be familiar. In December, on December 19th, Council approved our filter controls integration revision or project, I'm sorry. Tonight, we need to revise that authorization during preparation of the contract documents. It was discovered that two items were omitted from the cost that was approved at that meeting. Those two are bonding and sales tax. The bonding was for $4,733. Sales tax was $18,416. So this will increase the cost of that project. The revised amount of the total project will be $593, or $593,567 even, so we'd ask for your revision of that. And if you recall, the reason we're doing this, this is a direct contract with MR Systems. Because of the size of the project, if we had included it under our general contractor, they're entitled to mark that up 15%. So by doing this directly, we avoid the contractor markup. So even with this increase, we're still saving roughly $63,000 rather than having sent it through the general contractor and bearing that markup. So we're still to the good, just not quite as good as we thought in December.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on this item? So does the motion be to approve with the revisions?
You would just approve the requested change order.
Okay, thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the requested change order, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And the item that was added a moment ago, Mr. Jones?
On April 19th of 2019, due to high flows at the wastewater plant for reasons not unlike what we've been living under for the last two weeks, we had a permit violation on BOD, which is biochemical oxygen demand. Our permit limit for a weekly average is 45 milligrams per liter. Our discharge was 48.6 milligrams per liter, and it was simply due to high flows in the plant from heavy rain during that 24-hour period. As a matter of handling these, what we will call relatively minor permit infractions, EPD typically will offer a compliance order offer, which this is, and they have offered to settle the matter between the city for this violation for $463. So I would definitely recommend that we approve that, pay it, and put this matter behind us.
Very good. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Bob, Mr. Sanders, you have a handful this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first item is a change order on Doubt that Ferry. Southland submitted a change order, and the total increase is $17,925. It's for Bridge Foundation Investigation, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Tommy.
In solid waste, we annually purchase residential garbage carts to, for new customers. We need 400, and we got a bid from Toder LLC for $19,164.55. It's a budgeted item, and we recommend approval.
Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on.
Very similarly, we also need 200 residential recycling carts. Auto Environmental gave us a bid for $8,300. It's a budgeted item, we recommend approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on.
Our commercial front loader garbage truck number 6233 is in need of a, the whole rear tailgate has, needs to be replaced, and the frame basically holding the tailgate onto the truck. And the total is $23,043.62. It's budgeted item. We feel it's, we'll get hopefully several more years out of the truck. To replace a truck like this is probably $260,000, so we think this is a good deal, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? If not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one for you, please, Tommy.
We would also like to renew the lease agreement with RDK Truck Sales for the leasing of a commercial front loader. We currently have a front loader leased with them. The final payment, the 13th payment, is in May, and it's a balloon payment. And what they'll do, if we renew the lease, they pay the balloon payment, take the other truck back, and we get a new truck. And the new truck, it's another 13-month lease term, and it will cost us $6,172.77 per month. It's a budgeted item. This is actually a little bit cheaper than the current lease, mostly because interest rates have gone down. It's a budgeted item, we recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you. Sir, any discussion on this? If there's not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hill, you're up next.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Our first one is for a bid award for line pipe. This pipe is to go from the Transco Station to Brown's Farm Road. It's 21,000 feet of 6-inch line pipe. Total cost on this is $230,396.80. This is a budgeted item. We did advertise this on the Georgia Procurement Registry and on the city's website. We also had sent out six requests for proposals to other companies who had bid for pipe in the past for us. We're also requesting that you give the mayor and city clerk the ability to sign for a contract that will come with this after the approval from Mr. Lovell and our city manager. And this will come after we get all this stuff processed.
Okay. So a motion should include with the stipulation that it's approved by city manager and?
City attorney's office.
City attorney's office.
Yeah. Because David may approve it, he's smarter than I am. Sorry. Or not.
All right. Any discussion, and if not, a motion?
Motion to approve, to give the mayor and clerk his authority to sign.
Subject to the approval of the city attorney's and manager's office.
He was saying that.
I know.
You were just letting him go.
Well done. Got a motion?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Our next one is a lump sum agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation. This is for the improvements that's going to go on with Old Alabama Road from Bates Road to 113. This will be an ongoing thing. We will include monies in this in our next budget. It's probably going to be an expensive endeavor for us down the road, but for this contract, it's for the mayor to be able to sign for us to receive $16,168.40 for us giving up our easements here where they're going to do this road widening. But there'll be a lot more work to go on there in the future of the next year. This includes a resolution for you to sign, a e-verify, a contractor affidavit, which is like a, and we have a certificate of compliance. So there's, and there's three sets of this that we have to return to the GDOT folks.
Okay. Any discussion? Not a motion's in order.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Carter, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring before you this evening a request to accept a reimbursement grant. This grant is from the Georgia Emergency Medical Services Association, and this is a reimbursement grant from the state of Georgia through the Georgia Trauma Care Network to replace for funds that was utilized in training. The Georgia Trauma Care Network Commission is a, is a program to get more EMTs, emergency medical technicians, in the field. Our department completed the EMT program in 2019, and this grant would be in the price of $4,859.50. There is no match, no obligation. It's based upon successful completion of the program. We would ask your approval to accept these funds and that these funds be applied to our FY 2019 budget in the form of a budget adjustment to offset the training expenditures. Once again, that amount would be $4,859.50.
Very good. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve, this is refined.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Porta.
Yes, Mayor, with the fire department moving into new Fire Station 3, we had closed on the old sale on the old Fire Station 3 back on December 1st. Took us a little longer with our contractor to get out of there, it was 58 days that were being billed by the new owners. Negotiating with the contractor, I recommend the city pay 20 days out of that 58 days or $4,000 of this additional invoice, and we come out of the fire department if approved by the city council for $4,000.
Okay. Any questions for Dan on this? If not, and a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Runyon Hart, you are up with the financial report, and we'll need to add one additional item to the agenda when you're done. So thank you. Go ahead.
Go ahead and add an item?
I've decided you're going to go first and then allow.
Okay.
That's our idea.
I appreciate it. (laughing). I'm a mayor and council, we'll be looking at the December 2019 financial report and comparing to 2018. The general fund revenues increased over last December by 4.1 million dollars. Expenses increased by $941,000. Areas of revenue I look at on a monthly basis, local office sales tax increase of about $80,000. Billing permits and inspection fees increase of about $17,000. In the water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last December by $627,000. Expenses increased by $6.4 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, and increased capital expenses. In the gas fund, revenues decreased from last year by $831,000. Expenses decreased by $5.1 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost to purchase gas, decreased debt service expenses, and decreased capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by $80,000. Expenses decreased by $388,000. This is due to increased personnel costs, increased operating expenses, decreased cost to purchase electricity, and decreased capital expenses. In store water fund, revenues increased over last December by $87,000. Expenses decreased by $221,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses and decreased capital expenses. In the solid waste fund, revenues increased over last December by $472,000. Expenses increased by $202,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last December by seventy-seven thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. This is due to in, decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. And our cash position for the month of December, the total, the unrestricted cash has increased, and the, the restricted, the restricted cash has also increased.
Very good. Questions for Tom on the financial report? Ms. Brock, you got a comment?
Yes, I just have one thing to note. If you look at the monthly summary, you'll see that the water and sewer fund is in the negative about three point eight million dollars. That is specifically related to the, the project, the capital projects that are associated with the bond. We received the revenue from that bond in two thousand and eighteen and cannot reflect that revenue in any other years. Once the projects are complete and the bond is basically negative, we will make it right. But we cannot reflect the revenue from that bond in, in other years. So when you see that deficit, just know that it's related to the, the projects that are associated with that bond.
And it will go on for the next couple of years at least.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions or discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Council chair would like to add an item to the agenda for discussion regarding a request for a pub crawl ordinance.
Unloved.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Items add. Anybody, any opposed to, just we're talking about adding? We're good.
I'm opposed to adding it, but.
You're opposed, are you opposed to adding it? We could, we could know.
I'm opposed to adding it.
Okay. Item is added five to one. I was approached by Alan Sanders, who's a member of the Downtown Development Authority, this afternoon about two o'clock. Evidently earlier in the week, the DDA had had a board meeting that asked for some, some type of ordinance to be included in the city for their upcoming event for the pub crawl. Upon receiving that, I think I, he forwarded the information to me. He did work with Mr. Lovell as far as getting some preliminary guidelines, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir.
And so after he met with me, asked him to forward me his, the information. So I forwarded that out to council about three-thirty this afternoon. And so you've had that, we talked about it in work session. And this would allow for, in particular, what they're looking to do is to have on these two particular days to allow those that are participating in the pub crawl to be able to, if they have their special designed cup for that pub crawl, to give them the ability to walk it, to, to walk with those, with alcohol, with beer in those glasses from, from establishment to establishment. I told him that I would bring it to council to see what council's temperature was on it. And then staff can act accordingly based on what council wants to do. There's four different options before you. And those options would be to, to ask staff to put something in place before the March thirteenth and fourteenth pub crawl. You can say, do not put something in place before the March thirteenth and fourteenth pub crawl. You can say, put something in place so that it can be used in the pub crawl in the fall. Or you can say, don't put it in place at all. This discussion item is just so that we can have the ability to give staff direction on where council wants to be on this. Now, in order to do this, and again, I've given you the options for the discussion. If you chose to try to put this in place for the March thirteenth and fourteenth pub crawl, what it would require, what it would require is for you to direct staff to do this. Something would need to be drafted by Mr. Lovell's office. There would need to be a special call meeting of the Alcohol Control Board for them to take a look at it. They could make their recommendation, and then we would have it come before council at our March fifth meeting. And we would have to do what would be called an emergency ordinance reading to pass it upon one reading so that, with the, with the timeframe being the emergency, the emergency reasoning behind that. I'm not saying that's what I'm recommending. I'm saying that is what it would entail if you choose to take that course of action. And so I, I think it's a, it's a pretty big swing, and it's a large leap. And I'm going to put it in y'all's hands, and I've laid out what, what is, what they are asking. This is coming from the Downtown Development Authority, and whatever council decides to do, I'm fine with it.
And I know, we had a lengthy work session discussion. So what you're asking for is a motion, a second?
I'm asking for, I think there's the opportunity to have a discussion about how council wants to proceed, what direction you want to give staff on this.
So we don't have to make a motion or a second, are you?
At this point, I'd like to have a discussion about how you would like staff to proceed. And if there's a general consensus, we can nod our heads and give that direction to staff, I think. If it is rather divided, then I would probably call for somebody to make a motion to have a vote on how we will proceed.
I would like to see it. Go ahead and move forward now. See if we can get something done by the March dates.
Do you need verbal or just a head nod?
Again, the floor is open for discussion on the item, because again, this is a pretty big item.
I think them coming now is, I don't think it really meets the threshold of having to do emergency meetings and have an emergency ordinance hearing to, and we're talking about an ordinance that you want to do in three weeks. So I don't think that, I think this is a pretty big deal, even though you may say, well, it's just a couple, you know, a couple pub crawls. But I, I mean, we're, we're opening a door here that I'm not comfortable with, with opening. And I think we're, we're going down a road that I don't believe that we should, that, I don't believe we should go down. So I, I don't think that this meets the threshold of having, having the Alcohol Control Board special meeting, call a special meeting, and then move out. I think, I think we need to back off on that.
I just want to see movement towards this, see what we can come up with. If we don't like it, we don't like it. And we vote it down? If we do, then we vote it in. Either way, I just want to see, get the ball rolling towards this process. And I feel like if we don't take this opportunity to go ahead and do that, then we could very well see this not ever getting done. So I think it's.
You're saying that, you're saying that if we don't have this done by March thirteenth, it may never happen?
I'm just saying it may not come back up in the next year or so. So I just want, I just would like to get some steady movement toward this process. So that's why my recommendation is to go ahead and advise council or issue the staff to take the necessary steps.
To me, the DDA in our downtown is asking for us to consider this. As far as rushing it or not, it's going to go through the same channels. So that's the reason I'm, you know, they'll go to the Alcohol Control Board, they'll make notes of it. It'll come back to us. To me, it's inevitable. It's going to, a little different than TAF. I think it'll come back at some point. You know, why would we not just address it now and either pass it or not and be done with it? So I mean, I'm in support of us moving forward now.
Any other discussion?
I'm in support of this.
I'm in support of moving forward.
I'm okay with going now.
All right.
I don't, I don't think, I don't, I, I really don't think it meets the threshold. I mean, I mean, I understand there's some grace. So if I say something that, like my father used to tell me, poor planning on your part doesn't necessarily mean an emergency on mine. The pub crawl didn't just sneak up on us like right now. So I, I don't think we need to move forward and push the, push the agenda up for that. I just don't see the need for that. I, I'll make a motion that we tabled the issue.
Okay. Would anybody else like to second that motion? Okay. So that, that motion will die for lack of a second. And since it looks like we're going to be voting, I'll, I'll, I'll put my two cents worth in, even though I, I don't vote unless I absolutely have to. But I, I do feel similar to Councilman Roth. I'm not opposed to, to adding it, but I do think that as policymakers to classify that we're going to call this an emergency because of the basis of time. I think there's a time and a process for everything, and there are certainly priorities that there's times when we have to move things up to meet specific deadlines. And I'm not opposed to doing that. My personal feeling is this is moving a little bit too swift. And so with that being said, chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign?
No.
Motion carries five to one.
And let me just clarify. All y'all voted on is to direct staff to begin the process and bring an ordinance for y'all's, for y'all's consideration on your March fifth meeting. And part of that ordinance will involve an emergency declaration, which y'all will make a decision on at that time. And if y'all decide that it is an emergency, you can act on the ordinance. And if you decide it is not, you can, you will not act on the ordinance.
Okay. Can we call it just a non-scheduled operation?
No.
Unscheduled?
No. Thank you.
Mayor, we, since y'all didn't really vote on it, I don't think it does any harm. Randy sent me a high-tech thing called a text, which I'm not aware of, but I did get it. And mentioned on the Historic Preservation Design Guideline changes that we normally, when we change ordinances that involve development regulations and things, ask for a public hearing and see if there are any public comments related to those, to those particular design changes. And Randy mentioned he did not recall us asking for a public hearing. I don't think it was on the agenda either. But, but if you don't mind at this time, I think it would be appropriate to ask for a public hearing.
I don't mind it. I don't mind that at all. And again, that wasn't in the notes, and I'll apologize for.
Oh, no, that's our fault, not y'all's.
So I will open the floor for a public hearing relative to T twenty dash zero one, which is the HPC Design Standards Revision. And this public hearing is specific to that portion of the meeting. Anybody wish to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And if you would please, sir, your name and your address for our clerk.
Yes, my name's Hoyt Hatfield. Been up here before about this issue, I guess, at the thirty-two Castle Road.
Mr. Hatfield, if I could just stop you. What's before, what the public hearing is right now deals with the specific changes that were made to the Historic Preservation Ordinance.
Okay.
Not in general. I think what you may want to do is address the council in the general public hearing process that would come next.
Okay.
This is just specific to the, the changes to the Historic Preservation Commission guidelines.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody relative to T twenty dash zero one wanting to come forward and speak, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close. Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Greg, come on up. Your name and your address, please, for our clerk. We need those for our minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Greg Cordell. I live at four zero one West Avenue. And I think Keith may have explained a little bit of what to Hoyt, that I'm, but I would like to express my opposition to the moratorium itself and the, any extension.
Greg, there'll be a second public hearing after this, that anybody from the public can come and address issues? That's the appropriate time for that to be addressed. This is just dealing with the text amendments that were done as part of T, whatever that number is. I'll have it in front of me.
I understand. Thank you, sir. I just want to make.
I understand. So you can come up in just a minute to address those. This is a different public hearing.
Give us two minutes, and you can come back up.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Would anybody would like to step forward and speak about? T twenty dash zero one may step forward and do so at this time. That being, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for T twenty dash zero one. And if there's any further business to come before council, you may step forward and do so at this time.
Mr. Hatfield, that would be you.
That's, this would be the time to come on.
This is time for you.
And again, Mr. Hatfield, your name and your address for our clerk, please.
My name's Hoyt Hatfield. I live at forty-six Wellington Drive.
Thank you.
I'm just here on behalf of the homeowner at thirty-two Castle Road. I know there's been a moratorium placed two times against this property and are the West End Historical Society, not society, but the district. And I just wanted to say I'm, I'm opposed it because this property's already zoned R twenty, and I'm not trying to rezone it, and neither is he. And there's just a lot of issues that have been brought up, such as tree canopy, you know, traffic, you know, that will be brought in there. But we're only talking about, when I first started this, was about fourteen homes. But now, we're going to try to get it down to five. So with that being said, I hope that maybe some of the neighbors will be pleased with that if this thing continues on. But what I would like to do is just try to, you know, not have another moratorium and drag this thing on. I mean, like, I know there's some, some things going on, but I would just like to say that I oppose it, and that's, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to step forward and speak? Any additional businesses, welcome to do so at this time.
Again, my name is Greg Cordell. I reside at four zero one West Avenue. And again, I want to oppose the continuation of the moratorium. And I'm actually opposed to beginning of it. And I don't quite understand why it takes so long for someone to come up with restrictions or any proposed restrictions for this property. They're tearing down houses all through the city to rebuild new houses. There's no proposal whatsoever to tear down this historic home. It's already zoned R twenty, as Mr. Hatfield said, and everyone's aware of that. But we're not asking for any zoning change. The infrastructure is there in place to support at least three to five, maybe more, homes. And would like to see the council not vote to continue this moratorium and act under the current laws that we're under now and not wait for the state to change laws because we're trying to propose this now and not wait. We're wanting to move forward. The market's strong, the economy's strong. Any delay is causing har, excuse me, hardship for the owners of the property and the developer, Mr. Hatfield, proposed developer. And we would like for y'all to vote against continuing any moratorium on this property. There's, like I said, there's properties being torn down, historic properties. I don't know how you can judge historic if you get into the age, the square footage, the cost value. I mean, is it like, because there's an influential street, influential street? Or, I mean, what? There's, there's commercial property, there's industrial property within a quarter mile of this property. And to continue to hold this homeowner or anybody up for their, their rights to sell their property is just not right. That's my opinion, and I want to avoid it because I've been told there's no opposition. And there is opposition to this moratorium. And I would like for y'all to respect my opinion, take it in consideration, and vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business needs come before council this evening? Seeing none, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion.